Welcome to the Board of Education work session for Greeley-Evan School District 6. Today's the 13th of May, 2024. This meeting will now come to order. Ms. Lemon, will you call the roll for us, please?
Director Ozari.
Present.
Director Bentley.
Present.
Director Campos Spitzey.
Present.
Director Mash.
Present.
Director Matthews.
Present.
Director Norwood.
Present.
Director Sullivan. Six board members present.
Thank you, Ms. Lemon. First on our agenda tonight is a calendar review and community engagement. So if you will take a look at the calendar that is in front of you. Much of our calendar are graduations. Some of that's this week, then most of it next week. Ms. Lemon, do you have responses from everybody?
I did not as of earlier. I'm still waiting for responses from one board member.
Who do you still need responses from, Ms. Lemon?
From Director Sullivan.
Okay. We'll follow up with her.
Okay.
Is it Matthews if you want to ask him?
Okay. Everybody else then hopefully knows where they're going, which graduations we're attending. Just a reminder, please be early to those graduations. For our bigger graduations, we will have working secured for you. But please don't make texts you at 5 till and say, where are you? Are you coming? Please dress. There should be something telling you if it's regalia or if it's business dress for graduations. These are honoring events. Please dress in ways that reflect that. I'm trying to think of any other questions you guys have about our graduations and those events.
Wear sunscreen.
Sunglasses.
Sunglasses.
Sunglasses and sunscreen.
There's usually water for us and...
It can be very hot and it can be very cold. It can be very windy. And then just so, just think about your dress under your robe for those outdoor graduations. They can, you never know. If there is inclement weather, just a reminder, we'll keep you informed if we're postponing or if we're going forward. There are times we do go forward in the rain. So we'll, you know, we'll make those decisions. We do not have alternative locations for the graduations. We're ready to go.
We're ready. It's here.
It's here.
The school year. But that's much of what's on our calendar. Notice there are a couple of special graduations. The United Way Community Leaders Luncheon also is this week at 11 o'clock. Hopefully you know if you're attending that. Then we have one more, one more board meeting. We canceled the second board meeting of June. And so we just have the one board meeting in June on June 11th. Any questions about our calendar, comments?
Is the board meeting on the 11th, a Tuesday?
I don't know. Does the 11th...
Maybe I'm on the wrong year.
That is a typo on my part. Should be that Monday.
10th? I was like, okay.
Thank you.
Throw you a curveball.
Good catch, Ms. Norwood.
Like, okay.
Thank you.
So it's the 10th, right?
Well, moving right along to board member comments and reports, we'll start tonight with Dr. Campos Spitzey.
Sure. So I think it's been three weeks since we've met. So lots going on in the last three weeks. Some highlights for me were the D6 Retirement Celebration. I wish I knew how many cumulative years we celebrated that night, but I mean obviously upwards of 100. We did miss Mayor Gates at the ceremony. He was on his way back from vacation. But I just asked him and he served for 21 years in District 6. I just want to honor you as well. Outside of the D6 Retirement Celebration, got to go to a couple of school visits. We went to Fred Chartis School of Innovation, learned so much about Fred Chartis that I didn't know. Got to hear their origin story, which is really fun. Learned that it was a micro school. I didn't know that, that they capped their school at 124 students. And really capitalized on curiosity as being the way to teach children to just engage their natural curiosity and integrate reading, writing, and math through that. So that was cool. And actually this last Friday, they had their museum night, which is when all the students get to present projects that they've been working on. Had to miss it, but the theme was community and I got to see some pictures online that looked really fun. We also got to visit the D6 Online Academy, also a smaller school, around 300 students enrolled in that program, K through 12. And was really inspired by the passion of the new principal there, Jorge Gonzalez and Cassie Gonzalez, who presented to us and would love to get the word out about their school to more parents who they think might be a good fit. So that was pretty awesome. My favorite part of that school visit is they told us we were going to go visit a kindergarten class or like an elementary school class. And a couple of us started getting out of our seats and they're like, no, 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 sit down. We're going to put them on the screen. So really an online school. And then it got to help represent District 6 at the annual fundraiser for Frontier House. They do a breakfast fundraiser every year, highlighting that May is Mental Health Awareness Month. And getting to hear some really heartfelt stories about how while we have community members who struggle with mental illness, that there is a way to live well with mental illness. And was proud that we were there helping represent our school district.
Mr. Norwood?
Well, I got a chance to go to the Marine Corps Award Ceremony, which was quite eye-opening. They've got a lot of really great kids that go to school there. It's one of the really good programs that, you know, Major runs out there. And at the last minute, their speaker hurt his back. So I got a short text that said, you were on the hiring committee. Can you speak? So I threw a two-minute speech together and then read it, but it worked out pretty good. So that was, that was good. Left there and I went directly to a soccer game. Got a chance to see Northridge play their last home soccer game, which they won. And from there, I went to a couple of college signings. Got a chance to see some of my former students, get a chance to head off and continue their skills in college, so.
Mr. Bentley?
Yeah, I've been busy a couple, three weeks, like Dr. Brendan said. Me and Natalie actually got to do a little fun thing on 4/24. We went to Billy Martinez and their third grade class and did a presentation on school, school board and what we do and why we do it and how we do our job and what we are. And we end up having a lot of fun, little side conversations that had nothing to do with why we were there, but we had a lot of fun. Natalie, Natalie actually got a proposal and then got to give an autograph. She was famous.
It was a great day.
It was a lot of fun. Boys and girls club annual dinner was always fun. It's really nice to be able to attend that with you guys. And then also with Mr. Norwood, I attended the Marine Corps JRTC Awards Night. They always do a good job with that. It's well-run and they have a lot of really remarkable, outstanding kids in their program. So it's fun to see them succeed year after year. The D6 Retirement Celebration on 5-1 is also one of the highlights of the year for everybody, I think. Just kind of, it's bittersweet to see those guys go with their, you know, their institutional knowledge, but happy for them at the same time so they can kind of go enjoy their lives because, you know, they sacrificed so much during their careers. So 5-4, which was last Saturday, we got me and Michael and Deirdre and Jeff got to golf in the Dream Team Tournament. It was really fun to see those kids and see them out there. It was freezing cold and they all sat there and toughed it out. So kudos to them. Fred Chartis was also awesome. That's the first time I've been there. It was fun to see their, their school of innovation and how they do things there. Quite different than a normal school. So it was, it was fun to just see the way that they operate with their project-based learning and stuff. Frontier House Breakfast is just one of my personal favorites every year. If you don't tear up, you better check your heartbeat because they do some cool things over there. And then right off that, we went to the D6 Online Academy. Got to see all the great things they're doing. So it's just, just cool to see how many different choices and options the kids here have. So I think that's about all I got to do.
Mr. Ozari?
Well, in addition to the activities that several of the other board members had talked about Frontier House and the visit to the schools, I also had the opportunity for the third time this year, I think it's third time, maybe fourth time of attending the, a visit to the Capitol. I attended the Greeley Day along with Amy Lemon and several of our community leaders, including Mayor Gates, our city manager, Raymond Lee, and President Feinstein, gave us the opportunity to talk about some things going on in Greeley. One of them being, of course, the Osteopathic Medical School, which will have a very big impact, positive impact on our community. And we also talked about the state school funding formula during that day. And that too, the result of which will probably have a very positive impact on our school district and our community. In like matter, I also had the opportunity to attend the Colorado State School Board Association with President Matthews as we welcomed in a couple of representatives from the United Nations. And we had the opportunity to engage in discussion with them. And I'll let President Matthews speak more to that during your presentation. And then finally, last week, I had the opportunity to participate in the Greeley History Museum's History Fest that they put on down at the Centennial Village. And once again, I was thrown into an opportunity to work with students. I taught elementary school kids this time about the history of Greeley and specifically the historic architecture around our community as being part of the Historic Preservation Commission. And like I said, students from all over Northern Colorado. But it really stood out to me, our kids that came in from the district schools, very well behaved. Very good classroom management as well on behalf of our staff, which is really showcased what we do. I really enjoyed working with them. It was fantastic kids. So that's all I have. President Matthews, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ozari. Vice President Mash?
Yeah, so I also enjoyed attending the retirement celebration. And I think we've got to be at hundreds of years because if Mayor Gates was 20 years, I think there were at least five people who are over that 20-year mark. But yeah, I agree, just so much fun to hear some people's history of how many buildings they've been in. They started as, you know, a health clerk and then they became an office manager and then they became a teacher, you know, whatever. So I very much enjoy celebrating those folks. So Michael and I got to attend an event at Toynton to, yeah, welcome Farida Shahid. She's a special rapporteur from, I don't know if I'm saying that right, from the United Nations, who's doing reports on a number of different countries' educational systems, which I think would be fascinating to read the other reports about what is done well in other countries and what is different. But it was really, it's fun to get to just hear, I mean, it was about an hour presentation of all the things that we do in our district. So when you kind of boil it down to hear all the things that we're doing, it's really, it's really encouraging and just like, oh yeah, oh wow, yes. And she spent a lot of time with just a group of students and with just a group of parents. So really wanted to get, get the full picture of, of our school district. She's visiting Colorado and Indiana. So whether or not that's going to be an accurate cross-section of the American education system, I'm not sure. But pretty fascinating to speak with her. I'd like to congratulate the men's swimming and diving team. Officially, they're under Greeley West, but they have swimmers from all the different schools. And there were a couple of individuals who placed in the top eight, an all relay team, and one diver that went as well. So congratulations to them on all of their hard work. And I've been attending a lot of senior events at Greeley Central, but I know that that's, that's what's happening at all of our schools. So well done to our seniors. And as I've been telling my daughter, run strong through the finish line. I know. run strong through the finish line, I know that you all are probably feeling like you just like to be done, so there's a few more AP exams, I think, so good luck.
Yeah, lots of AP exams rolling on, they changed the schedule this time of year, I hate to, every year I miss the Frontier House Breakfast, and I would love to go to that, but it always seems like it falls on a morning where I'm taking kids to, trying to get kids to an AP exam, which is different, sometimes their examinations are not at their schools, so. I hated to miss that, but did get to see a few things, as Cal said, we got to play golf on a chilly morning, but great time with Dr. Pilch and her husband, and just seeing our students, they're all out there, many of them are seniors, and to be able to see them one last time and congratulate them before they walk across the stage, that's always fun. Retirement Celebration, one of the best events of the year, I just appreciate our teachers so much, and when you hear their stories and everything that they've done over the course of their careers, it's great, great to get to honor them in that way, and I appreciate those teachers that come to that event, and all the people that put that on, I don't know who all puts it on, I don't know if Ms. Lemon has a role in that, I don't know who all to thank, but it's always, always well done. And then, yeah, United Nations, that was, it was a great honor for our district to be, I mean, I don't know how many schools they looked at in Indiana, but they looked at two schools in Colorado, so we're potentially four schools, one of four schools that is representing the United States for this report, and so it was a great opportunity and a great honor to be chosen for, to represent the US in that way, so. Enjoyed getting to present with the other board members, that Jordan, it was, he said Caspi, but it was, how many, probably eight, ten of us that were there, it wasn't, there weren't a lot of board members that were invited to go, and then to be one of the schools and get to present what we're doing, and Toinon did a fantastic job, showed very well, so great, great last couple of weeks. Moving right along, we are to our curriculum adoptions. See Mr. Andrews coming forward, Dr. Dattery, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you.
We appreciate you're giving us a little time, you just want me to launch in?
Yeah.
Okay.
Fire away.
Okay, well, fire away, sounds good. Giving us a little bit of time prior to the actual board business meeting, where we can present to you these curriculums, and maybe go into a little bit more detail, and potentially ask, or you can ask any questions you may have, even in advance of it, then coming to you tonight as an action item, so that you have a thorough understanding. So we have two actually coming to you this evening, you probably saw that on the agenda, both middle school English Language Arts, as well as AP one course, and so you know that we've actually been doing, many of you have been a part of, Doran, I think this is your first time doing these curriculum review processes with us, and thus hopefully approving this tonight, but for AP, we've actually been doing this over the course of the last six years, so, because we're just keeping up with the changes that they're doing at the college board level, and so then we are keeping in alignment and in pace with that. So it's just AP French tonight for that, so a couple of those that are coming to you tonight. So the purpose, the reason why we really needed to bring this to you this evening, is it's actually been also six years since our last literacy adoption, and as you know, we're on that six, seven-year rotation cycle. What we did learn this, so we are making sure that we are staying in alignment with the Colorado State standards, our current curriculum is as well, but we also want to make sure that we have that authentic and complex text, since the last time, that, it's crazy, but these, you know, the materials have just gotten more sophisticated and better over time, and so certainly what we're bringing to you tonight is indicative of that. Yes, for sure.
Those of you who were with us seven years ago, will recall that the very first curriculum adoption we did, after passing our first middle-level override, was six, or seven, twelve Communication Arts, and so, or Language Arts, so this is now bringing it back up to speed at the middle level.
Right. And it had been years since we had done it at that point.
Like, I think, twelve years or something, prior to that, before we'd had a Language Arts adoption, so.
So these are all of the different people that served on this, keep in mind, we're talking sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, Language Arts only, and so you see, really on the right side, most every building being represented across both K eights, as well as our comprehensive, traditional middle schools, and we have a D six online, because knowing that that's a little different, we want to make sure that we are meeting the needs of all of our learners across the system. So we are incredibly grateful to all of these folks, and what they've brought to the conversation, the depth of, you know, really going deep into these resources and really selecting the very best one. So Dagan's going to share, he, along with, I want to say with Mr. Bill Fern, really did a lot of the heavy lifting with this committee, and making sure that we were dotting i's and crossing t's, and choosing the very best resources we move forward. I will say, as he gets into the process outline, that the current resource was one of the final, got down to the final, the current resource that we have with just some upgrades, but there were some very intentional moves that they made, and things that they determined were needed, as they're bringing forward the recommendation tonight. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to you, Mr. Dagan. Andrews, thank you so much for all the work that you've done on this.
Dr. Dagan, Andrews, that's right.
Sorry, I get used to that.
Yeah, that's right, thank you.
Well, thank you, Dr. Dattery. Before I share with you the recommendation, as Stacy talked about, I'm going to walk through the process a little bit, so we have a good understanding of what our committee did, and engaged with as we went through the process. So our first step is always to look at ed reports, which is a nonprofit third-party reviewer that's very highly regarded, and so with that, we only choose resources that are of the highest quality, and so we already narrowed down to seven, because they met in every single category on ed reports, so we started with those seven sets of instructional materials. At the same time, we were selecting committee members to make sure that we had a good diverse group, as Dr. Dattery talked about on the previous slide. We also did a scan across the state of Colorado to look at what other districts were adopting at the same time, so we could get a good sense of that. And as we rolled into December, we reviewed the best practices in literacy, and that helped us draft the district philosophy statement around this, and that becomes kind of the North Star in terms of the adoption, of what's critically important that we really must have in an ELA adoption to really support our students and our teachers as well. We also always start with our analyzing instructional materials rubric, we start with the very, with one that we start with, and then we customize it for each of the different contents to make sure it lines up exactly with the unique content areas and how the standards progress within those. As we move forward into January, we discussed the three shifts in literacy, which have been around for a very long time, but our materials, as Stacy was talking about, continue to get better and better at supporting the three shifts in literacy. We reviewed the anchor standards in reading, writing, speaking, listening, language, and then began our materials review with the AIM rubric. And so once we started on that process, we started with seven, and then we narrowed it down to the top three resources, and those top three resources, we had a chance, we sent the resources out to schools, and people had an opportunity to pilot those materials, see what student engagement looked like, and how teachers felt as those lessons were implemented in the classroom as well. Those sample lesson pilots were really illuminating, and gave us some great information as we moved forward into March. And so from there, we brought in our vendors, publishers, to come in and give us even more information. So it gave us an opportunity, if we didn't see something in the resource, to be able to ask questions, and find out answers to those questions, and then from there, committee members were also able to actually adjust their scores within the rubric to reflect the new information they found, and so that was being updated as well. We also, from March first through April first, we provided our materials, we sent it out on social media, so it was here in nightshade, so that people could come in, look at the materials, provide feedback. We also gathered feedback from additional teachers, so twenty-two of our middle school ELA teachers who are not on the committee also provided feedback. The great thing about it is, all of those different sources really started to coalesce in the same direction, with the same reviews across all of these stakeholder groups. Then in April, selected and proposed recommendations of resources through a consensus process, so I was able to get in a circle with our committee members, we put our philosophy statement up there, we put the key criteria, we walked through those pieces, and we went through that shared decision-making and arrived at consensus through that process. Once we were there, it was then taken to District Curriculum Council, and then District Curriculum Council unanimously voted to move it forward to you all this evening as a recommendation for our ELA adoption. The final selection of the committee that we bring to you tonight was EL Education, which is Imagine Learning, who provides that? You can see that all three, on a five-point scale of these resources, scored highly, but you can see an impressive four-point-four out of five-point scale for EL Education. This particular recommendation that we are providing to you tonight for EL Education, the total cost is nine-hundred-and-sixty-thousand-eight-hundred-and-ninety-seven dollars and fifteen cents. That provides all the materials, including teachers' manuals, student consumable workbooks, digital licenses for seven years, required and recommended books, professional learning for teachers, co-teachers, and building leaders, and so what that provides is, our core classroom teachers are going to get very specific training, our teachers who are co-teachers who support multilingual learners and students in IEPs, they're going to get a separate training that focuses on access and the built-in supports that are within the resource to help all students read grade level and engage in complex text. And so our building leaders will also have special training, where they will learn the key leadership moves, and how to support implementation as well.
I'll also add that this is the same resource that we have adopted in our elementary K five, so now we have a seamless, aligned curriculum for English Language Arts from kindergarten through eighth grade. While that is good for all kids, when we think about them going from, say, one elementary to a comprehensive middle, it is really purposeful and good in our K eight schools as well, as they are in one school, and we continue to just, you know, build on that for the students' sake. There's a lot of wisdom inside of that, so. When I mentioned that about Study Sync being, that's the one on the right, which is their current resource, that actually, they kind of liked into literature just slightly more, not a lot, but really, EL Education pulled ahead in terms of, just for all the reasons of it just being a solid curricular resource, and that was not even on the table when we did this six, seven years ago, like I said, this was not one of the resources we could even choose from. So they do evolve, and they do get better a lot of times, so, not always, but a lot of times.
Can I ask a newbie question? So for the student consumable workbooks, is that for one year, like?
Good question.
And then, yeah, so is this price tag for one year of curriculum?
No, so that really takes us through four years of the adoption cycle that's in this particular proposal.
So it's all seven years for the digital licenses, and then the consumable, the student consumable workbooks, like paper and pen, forty years. We know that it may actually take us the full life, depending on how many of our teachers utilize the full, all the consumables, some different things, so we felt like, let's not do the full seven years on that, let's do about half the life, and then we can go from there if we actually do need more.
It also provides a very...
Be physically responsible.
Sorry, it combines a very robust digital resource that can be used in that way as well, so they can choose between the consumable and digital licenses, and we think some will gravitate more towards digital.
Certainly there to purchase should they all need them for the full duration. Any other questions?
Do you anticipate as steep of a learning curve for this at the middle level as there has been in the elementary, for the teachers?
Go ahead.
So at middle level, they only teach modules, where at the elementary level, they have three different blocks that they're preparing and planning for, and so that does streamline it, and makes it a little easier on middle school for the planning, because they're not teaching phonics, they're not teaching those other pieces that go with the elementary curriculum.
And there will be a lift, because anytime you change a resource, there is a learning curve. That was part of the conversation, because certainly, had we stayed with Study Sync, that's not, you know, that, you kind of take that part off the table, and just learning the few little nuances, so we certainly had that conversation, and they said, you know, because it is a much more robust and rich curriculum, it's worth the training, and it won't be as big of a lift, not that, I mean, if it was, it would be, and it would be worth it if it's the right thing to do for kids. But we also feel like, you know, it isn't quite, quite the same. But it is a different kind of resource, it's laid out differently, it's, you know, kind of forces us to do it a little differently, but I also feel really good about the number of people that were around the table, because when you are looking at, say, English Language Arts, right, at the middle level, you're talking far fewer people than you are, even though we had a huge committee for the elementary, it's still not all four-hundred-and-fifty teachers, right, you know, but you've got a vast, well over half of them, well about half of them that are in the...
It looks like the different groups all chose this curriculum.
Yes, they did.
Is that, that's correct, like, it looks like the adoption committee...
Yes.
...favored this one, the all-six, eight feedback favored this one, and the pilot study favored this one.
Correct. Yep, all, that's right.
And it aligns with our elementary curriculum.
Yep. So just over and over came out as the top choice.
I was just, I feel like anytime, you know, don't want to pull in any negativity, I was just curious, because I know it has been, you know, a big lift.
I have a second question.
It's the reality, and we really talked about that, and they were open about that, let's talk about this, let's not be, you know, naive, there's been a lot of different type of work that we've had to put into this at the elementary level, but to your point, in all three cases, even with that, because people, eyes wide open, they know that, they still chose that as the very best resource. Anything else before we kind of tell you a little bit about the AP French? We did have these on display downstairs, I know that that was in communication with all of you, and it went out and was publicly, you know, it's all in your board package, what that looked like, so we had some, not much review, but we always have it available, and we left it out there even a little longer than what we had said, so we said, let's just leave it out there a little bit longer, so we had that. Certainly, there's all professional development support all built into this as well, so we feel good about all of the next steps around that.
I did talk to someone at the retirement celebration who works on your team, I forget his name, who talked about maybe next time putting it at the Link Library for the public to review, to try to get like a higher participation rate from outsiders.
Maybe that would be a good suggestion. We could certainly talk about what that looks like.
One more question, is it rolling out all the grades, all the schools, or is there a pilot like there was for kindergarten and...
All the grades, all the schools next year, yeah.
Sounds good.
Yeah, and when you think all fifth graders going into sixth grade have had that, right, so even some of our seventh graders, because some fifth grades piloted a few years ago, they'll even be, bless you, some of our seventh grade students as well.
And I'd say that continuity piece is the largest indicator for us.
You bet.
Absolutely, with our kids, we need that.
All right, well, if you think of anything else, that sounds good, but I want to continue with our AP and just share with you, this again is our, just the one AP French, Language and Culture. We won't judge Dagan, however, we will have time, he's going to actually say them in French.
I took Spanish in this one.
But it is French courses, and they do have French names, as you probably saw in your board packet. So again, as I mentioned to you already, just a little bit, that this keeps us in alignment with the expectations and the updates that College Board has made, and so it's in alignment with all of those things, and then truly ensuring that we are choosing resources that ensure students read and analyze complex texts and write coherently, that is, you know, preparing them for career and college, no matter what they choose, that they are able to do those things, so very pleased. And because we are talking a much smaller, you know, we're just talking AP, right, so the teachers that touch it were involved in this, and other, and so you can see from the different, D P French at West, yes, as well as the AP... the different DP French at West, yes, as well as the AP at the Central and Northridge, yes, all the upper level. So Dagan will just share again quickly the outline of the process that they went through again and where they landed.
Yeah, very similar, but some subtle differences to our AP. And so they did review the equity and access in AP and read two different articles. And those articles were really about opening doors for students and making sure we're providing as much access to students and then thinking about how can we support students. And so there were two really powerful articles that really helped shape thinking around this and how we can open up and make sure we're offering this in a more equitable way. We did review the current resources, identified potential resources, just like in the other. They started with the AIM rubric, analyzed it line by line, and then made adjustments to meet the needs of the AP, the College Board inside of that. And so in February, they did view presentations on multiple types of curriculum. So really looking at digital content, paper pencil, as well as more customizable content to think about how, again, they can support students who may not have all the prerequisites that maybe you would want in an AP course, but you have all the supports there to help with those three different kinds of curricular resources. And so when they revisited the equity and access in AP, they read articles about gifted Hispanic students and how they can support success. And then they began the process of actually reviewing the resources using the AIM rubric. In March, they continued to do that and then did the same process, brought in vendors, listened, asked questions, were able to dig deeper. And then from there, they were also able to update the rubric ratings inside of that as well. They did finalize those AIM rubric ratings. They confirmed the statement on equity and access, keeping that at the center and the core as their North Star inside of this. They did review student staff, family, and community feedback on the final resources. So all of these pieces of information went into their final decision. And so they made the final decision and brought that recommendation again to District Curriculum Council, which is part of our process. And the council, you voted unanimously again to move this recommendation to this evening for your approval. All right, this is where it gets fun. So the total cost of this is $34,357.29 and the three resources are Chez Nou. Thank you. And it's a monthly magazine from Scholastic that includes current events for students to practice with language in an authentic and high-interest way. This is the really good one, Une Foie pour Tous.
Not bad.
Not bad, it was in the ballpark, thank you. And that's from Pearson-Salves, which provides intense comprehensive grammar practice to prepare students for the exams. And then Entre Culture Français, four, I'm just going to say four, from wayside aligned with both AP and IB themes and combines a standards-based approach to teaching the French language and culture.
And just before we open it up to any other questions you may have, I just want to give a shout out to Ms. Amanda Krieger. She has, she, you know, provides coordination for all of our AP and IB coursework in addition to K-12 Avid. And she's done a phenomenal job all six years, and not the least of which is this team as well, really, you know, going through this process and making sure that they are doing good work and getting good, solid resources in front of kids in our AP classes. So proud of the work they do.
And AP comes up every, is that six years as well?
They continually are doing different courses throughout that six-year process they have, they have done. So over, if you looked in board docs over the last six years, you'll see at this time of year, we've brought different AP courses before the board for approval for resources because the College Board was updating along the way. So we would keep up with those updates that they were making. Does that make sense?
That's almost a yearly evaluation.
Yeah, they do it yearly. They do it yearly, just different courses.
Okay.
We refreshed all of them.
We've refreshed all of them now, yeah. This is the last.
This is the last.
So hopefully they hang on to them for a little while.
Yeah.
And all three high schools agree to the curriculum, which is really great.
It is. There was a day when that did not happen.
That's unusual. That's very good. That's a good sign.
Yeah.
Say magnifique.
Very good.
Any other questions? Either curriculum that's been presented. All right, guys, I think that's maybe all we have for you.
Thank you for your...
Thank you very much. Please thank these committees that did all this work for us. Very appreciative.
We will. Thank you. And we'll bring it to you tonight as an action item with a much shorter presentation.
Thanks, guys.
Now it's our legislative debate. Invite Mr. Fall.
Yeah, it was a very busy legislative season, as you all know. Lots, lots of activity and lots of impact on, on pre-K-12. So we'll hit the big ones and Nate will hit the big ones and then I think he's going to ask Megan and me to finish up for him.
Thank you, Dr. Pilch, President Matthews, members of the board. As Dr. Pilch mentioned, this was a pretty active legislative session. I have prepared for you just kind of an overview. We're going to go over some of the kind of major bills that we had previously talked about, some of them we did, some of them we didn't, that ended up being passed. We'll talk about a few bills that ultimately failed. And then, as Dr. Pilch mentioned, I'm going to reserve time at the end, quite a bit of time, so that her and Ms. Sponsor can talk through funding, school funding. I just don't want to have to fumble through that and they are much better served to kind of talk through some of those changes. So please, if I'm missing a bill, if you have any questions, have my computer in front of me so I can certainly see if a certain bill that you might be interested did ultimately pass. But we can get into it and just let me know if you have any questions. So starting with past legislation, the first bill, House Bill 241044, additional para-service retirees for schools. This is the bill we talked about, where currently you're allowed up to 10 service retirees if there is a need in your district. And this bill allows school districts to exceed that 10-retiree cap by one retiree for every 1,000 students above 10,000 students. So in this district, that will give us a handful more service retirees that we can hire. We know that those para-service retirees have a lot of institutional knowledge, both in this school district, but also in school districts statewide and just have a lot of knowledge and can really support us in a really great capacity. So this is really great legislation for us. This is something that we did support. This bill was amended to limit those retirees timeframe to six years where they wouldn't be losing any, having a reduction in benefits. So that gives them up to six years, which was one amendment that was changed since the last time we talked about this. So really great legislation will allow us to keep some people on. I'm looking at Mayor Gates right now, probably not, but maybe there's some other folks in the system who might be willing to stay on and continue to serve District Six because they are such a great resource.
Would this maybe allow a full-time teacher to come back and work part-time or something like that without changing, you know, what their para-retirement's going to be?
Yes, but it would, it would be on a part-time basis, kind of whatever para currently allows, which I believe is 140 hours.
110.
110, as the contract allows. So it would be kind of on a limited basis. So, you know, perhaps there's some, you know, instructional teaching capacity that they could come back and serve schools or provide some kind of ongoing support, but they wouldn't be able to come back as a full-time teacher.
Right.
So, yeah, of course. The next bill is House Bill 241087. This is that professional endorsement, special education teaching bill. We had talked about this a few times and this was going to kind of create an additional pathway for current educators to get that special education endorsement. This bill ended up becoming really heavily amended, but it still moved forward and is going to allow current educators with a valid teaching license to work on getting that special education endorsement. So the way that they've set it up now is the State Board of Education will create rules for the coursework requirements that these individuals will need to go through in order to get that special education endorsement. And they also may maintain their current employment while they're in or participating in an alternative teacher program to get that special education endorsement. So the State Board will ultimately come out with the rules and the requirements for what is necessary. It will be robust, it will be comprehensive. So I think some of the concerns we previously had were they're just going to kind of make it somewhat easy for individuals to go and get that special education endorsement. And that is no longer the case. I think the State Board will certainly put in some pretty strict guardrails that valid teachers will need to, you know, go through in order to get that endorsement. But that does open the door to getting some more folks to become special education teachers or to at least be endorsed in that area, which is an ongoing need, not only in this district, but in all school districts statewide. So again, I would say this is really beneficial legislation and this will help us hopefully kind of add some capacity in our buildings to have more individuals who have that kind of endorsement. Any questions with that? All right, the next bill is House Bill 241305. This is changes to concurrent enrollment students. So this bill expanded, it did two things. It expanded the pathways under PTEC. So PTEC is really for kind of those science, technology areas. This actually really expanded the pool of potential courses that could be in PTEC and I kind of had it noted here. So the categories are any major industry categories identified in the Colorado Talent Report, which could include life, physical, and social sciences, architecture and engineering, computers and mathematics, installation, maintenance, and repair, business and finance, construction and extraction, community and social services, and transportation and material moving occupations. So this really does expand kind of the potential pathways so we can create new programs that were previously under that PTEC model. I'm not totally sure what the folks who are leading the PTEC work in this district are thinking, but certainly this gives us plenty more options that we can work for those kind of additional concurrent enrollment programs to give individuals kind of more specialization for when they graduate high school. So again, this is really beneficial legislation. It just gives students more opportunities to learn more about kind of that career readiness piece while they're still in high school. The other key provision to this bill is it added an exception to the COF credits. That's a College Opportunity Fund. Currently under law, while students were in concurrent enrollment programs, they'd be dipping into their COF credits. So by the time they graduate high school, instead of 145 credits that they could use for higher education, they would only have 90. Now with this legislation, they essentially are getting those concurrent enrollment credits. They're earning college credits while in high school, but they're not dipping into those COF credits anymore. So, which is great because they might change their minds and then they want to go into a four-year institution and they want to have all of those credits available for them so that they can use them. Because in Colorado, we use kind of a stipend model for in-state tuition and that's that COF credit. And so that was a really beneficial change. And it's not just for PTEC, it's really for really any concurrent enrollment program, teacher recruitment, education, and preparation. So things of that nature, which we have a lot of students that are currently doing and using those COF credits. So moving forward, they won't have to dip into those, which is a really big benefit. So again, this is really, in my opinion, positive legislation that will help support kind of student development and help them kind of find the career that best fits their The next bill is House Bill 241039. This is non-legal name changes. So this bill was ultimately amended, but now what it will do, and we will have some language presented to the board, maybe at the next board meeting, for some changes to policy. Because this bill does require boards of education to adopt written policies prohibiting discrimination on the basis of gender expression, which includes the use of a student's chosen name. And so the policy must also specify that it is discriminatory to knowingly or intentionally use a name other than the student's chosen name. So this is opposed to their legal name, the name that their parents chose for them. If a student wants to go by a different chosen name at school, we need to honor that request. We need to have that kind of language written into policy. And it is now discriminatory for us to intentionally misuse that student's name. I would say that this already ties into the Colorado Anti-Discrimination Act. There's already language around kind of intentionally or deliberately misusing an individual's preferred or chosen name. But now this is really codified in statute for education, boards of education to adopt policies on this subject. So there will be some, some policy changes and I just kind of wanted to point this one out, just so you're aware when those changes come forward. All right, the next bill is House Bill 241285. This is the Student Weight-Based Bullying Prevention. So previously under Colorado law, there were some, when it came to bullying, there were just a few categories of prohibited bullying and that was really bullying based on a protected class and bullying based on academic performance were prohibited. This bill expanded that those protected persons to include bullying on the basis of weight or height or kind of any of those physical characteristics. So we will also be making some modifications to our policies on bullying and we will be making sure that this isn't happening in our schools and it is being addressed and redressed through a policy process. I think in my opinion, in many ways, this was probably already being addressed in many ways. We don't allow bullying and bullying is bullying, kind of no matter what it looks like, but it is now codified in statute, so it will lead to some policy changes moving forward. The next, and this will be the last bill that we talk about that passed. Again, there are many, many other bills that do impact schools, but I just kind of wanted to point out some of the bigger ones that will have some board action in the near future. And the next bill is House Bill 241323. This is school graduation attire. So this bill allows students to wear objects of cultural or religious significance as an adornment at a graduation ceremony. An adornment has been defined by this bill that means something attached to or worn with, but not replacing or covering in its entirety, graduation attire, and is not limited to decorating graduation caps. Cultural has also been defined and it only applies to those protected classes such as disability, race, ethnicity, and so forth, but it does not include objects that might be incitement, defamation, fraud, obscenity, child pornography, fighting words, and threats. You know, so this will lead to some complications perhaps moving forward, we'll see. I, I trust that most students will be respectful with kind of any adornment that they may wear, but, you know, of course, they would still need to reply with our dress codes. They wouldn't be able to do anything outside of our dress codes. And they can wear kind of whatever they want under, under their graduation attire. I don't believe we actually have any current prohibitions of what they can't wear underneath their graduation attire, but this bill does specify that we cannot make any restrictions on that. There is a substantial disruption and material interference clause where we could perhaps prohibit a student from wearing certain adornments if it were to potentially lead to substantial disruption or material interference. But it would need to be based on evidence of disruption rather than relying on an undifferentiated fear or apprehension of disturbance. And then it would need to be the least restrictive restriction necessary to ensure that they can still wear whatever cultural adornment that they may have that is least restrictive. So we're just going to have to see how this plays out, kind of on a case-by-case basis. I think really more or less this will apply to higher institutions more than K-12, but nonetheless, I'm sure that we will encounter a few situations that will require a little deeper look into what students are wearing during graduation. Any questions with those bills?
Mr. Fall, there are school districts that have practice, maybe policy, that do not allow anything in addition to the school-provided graduation regalia. So I would presume that's why this came forward. That's not been our practice. We, you know, we allow students to wear other items with their, over their, with their graduation gown. And most of our schools, I think, allow them to decorate their graduation caps, but there's school districts in Colorado that don't allow either, any of it, so.
So, and as is the case with most legislation, these typically come out of one case, out of one school district.
Do we not allow them to decorate caps? Just as that new? Because gap, I can remember caps at gaps. I think it's...
The scholars will do the big stories.
So no decorating caps? Let's not have it on record. No decorating of caps? Okay.
And just to even backtrack on that, you know, of course, you know, this doesn't mean that just anybody can decorate whatever they want. It really does need to be grounded in kind of this cultural piece and they would really have to demonstrate why, you know, it's appropriate for them to wear kind of this additional piece in addition to their regalia that they're currently wearing. So again, we'll be addressing this on a case-by-case basis and...
I think before you go on to failed bills, let's see if they have any questions on what passed.
Yes.
When, when do these take effect? I mean, how much wiggle room do we have to change policies as needed?
So as far as the nondiscrimination policies that I mentioned, we'll have to have those ready for the new year. So I plan to have those changes by the next board meeting in June. And then for the... And then for the school graduation attire, I believe doesn't go into effect until next year, but I will double-check and make sure. And of course, let our kind of leaders for the high schools know kind of what to expect. So the school graduation is prior to the 2024, 2025 school year. We would need to adopt a policy that aligns with those requirements. And then, yeah, the student weight-based bullying prevention also will be for next year. And, and the paraservice retirees would also begin next year. Any other questions? All right. So just moving, just talking just briefly about a couple of the failed bills. I, I only bring these up because it's likely that we'll see different renditions of them next year, except for maybe the first one. This is just one that really does relate to the school district, and that is the content materials and libraries. This is that bill that would have created those kind of statutory guideposts for book reviews. Again, this district, I think, has done a really tremendous job in, in its book review process. This Board of Education has seen book reviews on appeal. I don't know of any other school district in the state that actually had this go all the way up to the Board of Education. But just know that, that there will not be any statutory requirements. We'll continue to follow our policy if we see any more book challenges moving forward. The next bill was this Concurrent Resolution for Child Sexual Abuse Accountability. And this bill would have allowed the General Assembly to pass a resolution that would have been referred to ballot as a ballot measure to voters during the November 2024 election that would create this kind of retrospective law, allowing victims of sexual abuse that occurred while the victim was a minor to bring a civil claim for that abuse. And the measure would have also allowed the General Assembly to retrospectively waive governmental immunity for child sexual abuse civil claim. Of course, nobody wants to be kind of on the side that I'm currently speaking from for the horrible situations that I'm sure many people have gone through. But of course, to have something that happened in the 70s get brought up to this school district and have something that we'd be financially responsible could be really problematic for a lot of school districts or any governmental entity in that point in terms of kind of responding to and paying out any of those potential claims. So that bill did fail, but we'll likely see something similar to this kind of for years to come. Because I've seen something similar to this bill in years past. And so we will see, you know, whether or not this ultimately does get referred to the voters. The next bill that failed is House Bill 241167. That's Prohibit Student Seclusion. And this bill would have just ultimately ended student seclusion rooms altogether. I know that there was a lot of kind of conversations with Disability Law Colorado and some other advocates that were hoping to end the use of student seclusion rooms. Again, as I mentioned before to this board, this is really a last-gap effort. It is very rare to use student seclusion rooms. It's only really emergency situations, but they can be very helpful in times of emergencies to helping kind of help students out. And so, you know, ultimately, we don't want to use student seclusion rooms. We don't have an eye towards using them, but at times, they can be something that we might need to rely on. This is certainly something that we will continue to see moving forward. Ideally, we would like to see something dialed back from a total prohibition to something with maybe more restrictions. The process is already very restrictive. The reporting, we do have to report all seclusions to the state. I mean, we are really demonstrating kind of when we're doing them, how we're using them, and it is very much on a limited basis. And so we will continue to rely on these when we need to until the state tells us otherwise. The next bill is House Bill 241168. This is that Equal Access to Public Meetings Bill. This is a bill that would have really made significant changes to live streaming Board of Education meetings and work sessions and things of that nature. As I mentioned to this board, we really do go above and beyond providing accessibility to our community in terms of our work sessions. Most boards don't even have or livestream their board meetings in the nature that we do. We also livestream our Board of Education business meetings. I'm sure there's some school districts that simply record them. And so we're already kind of going above and beyond the call of, of what the state law requires. But this might have opened the door to work session retreats and other things where we're doing meetings outside of this building. And then we would have had to come up with a way to livestream those meetings. And it could have just been kind of a really challenging process for us. So, you know, I'm sure that there are folks that are still looking for transparency, that do want to have kind of livestream board meetings. It is cost prohibitive for many school districts to do it in this nature, which is one reason why this bill did ultimately fail. But I can anticipate moving forward that there will likely be bills of this nature kind of wanting some more kind of transparency from boards of education and other governmental entities to demonstrate, you know, publicly kind of the workings of the board as it's going on. This bill also would have changed kind of how public testimony could be delivered. And again, that would have been kind of through a remote process. That's something we already allow for, and I don't, I didn't anticipate really any major changes. I think ultimately, it was kind of the work sessions and retreats and things that are happening outside of this building that I was somewhat concerned about because this board occasionally likes to meet outside of this building. And, you know, I think that that is a great opportunity to go to schools and things of that nature. So. The last bill that we'll certainly see introduced again next year in one way or another is House Bill 241296. That's Modifications to the Colorado Open Records Act. The bill that was proposed this year would have really provided a lot more flexibility, time for public entities to respond to public records requests. It was really the Press Association that was kind of the big proponent behind going after this bill, making it very, very complicated. So ultimately, this bill did not pass. So CORA will remain in place as it does. We do have a process that I work with my assistant regularly on open records requests. We don't see the, a number of open records requests that some school districts might receive, but we do receive quite a few. It would have been beneficial to have a little bit more flexibility in terms of time to respond to those requests. And we'll just see kind of as the years go on, whether or not there are actually any changes to CORA. But for now, we'll just keep, keep doing what we're doing. So. Any questions with any of these failed bills or any other bills you might have some curiosities about?
We didn't talk finance.
So that is the next part, as we'll talk more about school finance. So I have alerted Ms. Sponsler and Dr. Pilch that with their support, we can talk a little bit about the changes to school funding. There was a, there is a new funding formula, which has taken at least a decade to get that changed. I just want to give a shout out to Dr. Pilch for her tremendous work confronting a lot of folks in the state on these changes to the School Finance Act and to the funding formula. There was a lot of opposition to this, and I'm just really thankful to have a leader like Dr. Pilch make the changes that were ultimately made to help serve more at-risk students in the state. That's what we've been asking for all along, especially in this school district with the makeup of this school district, that we need more funding to support our, our at-risk students. And it was just really amazing to watch her go down to the Capitol and work with other superintendents and stand up for what was right ultimately. And I'm just really proud of this school district and Dr. Pilch for, for doing what we did. And the last thing I'll mention before I turn over to Ms. Sponsler and Dr. Pilch is that they did put an end to the BS factor. So they have quote, "fully funded" the K-12 budget. Of course, we have about a billion-dollar deficit to make up for the last however many years for a lack of funding. But it is really beneficial to see lawmakers put an end to the budget stabilization factor. We're really thankful to the General Assembly for doing that. So I am not sure if there's any specific questions on school funding, but I will let Ms. Sponsler and Dr. Pilch take it from here.
You're too kind, Mr. Fall. Thank you for your kind words. It was a team effort. Do you want us to review it with you all a little bit? Or do you feel like you have a pretty good?
Do we have time?
Yeah.
We're good on time?
Yeah. Last time.
Quick, quick review, and then we'll let.
So maybe, and maybe I'll just start with kind of the, the process, which is, I've never, I've never been this deeply involved in working to pass a piece of legislation as what I was with this one. And so, you know, there's a lot of hurry up and wait through the process. And, you know, there was a time through the process where we thought it might even have been killed and we wouldn't be going forward. And then we, Speaker McCluskey worked really hard to figure out a compromise, to figure out what it was going to take to get key organizations in the state on board with supporting this and, and really turned some things around. One of those pieces, there were a couple of, initially, there were a couple of pieces in the legislation that asked for studies to be done around average daily membership or average daily attendance that also indicated we were moving to that. And then there was another piece in the original legislation that asked for a study of, or a study of what we would call backpacking the dollars or sending the dollars directly to earmarked schools for earmarked students, students who qualified under these factors. And so both of those pieces came out of that original legislation in order to bring on some special interest groups in the state and, and advocates for K-12 in the state who, who we really needed in order to, to make this go in both the House and the Senate. Then we, you know, so the way it really landed is that the factors are, I think the easiest way to explain it is are rearranged. And so factors that received a very high count in the past became much less significant in the new formula. And factors that were not included or that received a lower count or lower weight have been moved up in the actual formula for allocation. And so the biggest pieces for us were to get poverty or at-risk and English language learners where each would get a weight. So presently, under the current funding formula, that a student can be an English language learner and a student can qualify for free or reduced lunch, but we only get a weight for one of those criteria. We don't get a weight for both. And what a student who's living in poverty needs can be very different than what a student in, who's an English language learner might need. And that student who is the same student is going to have different needs than a student who just lives in poverty or a student who is just qualifying for English language learning. And so that was a big win for us because, because of the students who we serve, the demographic we serve here in District 6. There's also additional dollars for special education, which will benefit every district in the state of Colorado when those dollars, when that piece is fully implemented. It, it is not fully implemented next school year, the special education piece, as I understand it. So it, it will be a piece they come back and look at. The, the, it is accurate that districts are being held harmless. So no district will receive less money than they had received the previous year. And, but I think districts, I was on a call today with superintendents. What was evident to me on that call was at least one of the superintendents didn't fully understand that. And as they're looking at their projections for next year, they're seeing the changes in how property tax, property taxes are going to be assessed. And if you, like, what we realized this year when values, homes were allowed to be valued at a lower value than what they had been officially assessed at, that meant less dollars on the mill levy override for us. So I think superintendents are still working to understand this, especially many of them had, did not stay as close to this as what we did to really follow it. But it, it means about $3 million plus to us the first year, and that dollar, that amount will continue to grow annually up to about $20 million.
$18 million.
$18 million in six years out. So it's, you know, it's, it's truly a benefit for District 6. There is a, a piece in there, and this was another piece of getting it through the Senate, was to, a piece to address, what if the money is just not there? What if we can't sustain this? And so there was an amendment put in while it was in the Senate to allow for the, the Joint Budget Committee? No, no. Yeah, the Joint Budget, for some reason, the Joint Budget Committee can pause the increase in funding annually if, if it looks like the dollars are not there to implement it that next school year. So that gave comfort in the Senate, I think, for supporting this. And as a result, the legislation passed 55 to 7 with the whole legislature. And so it was a huge win. I do want to share that throughout this, President Matthews' remark about somewhere in Colorado, a third grader has a cure for cancer, and it, it should not be determined that that third grader's needs are met to be able to, to realize that by where they live. And so it's pretty exciting that you, your quote became really a label, you know, an earmark throughout this battle. And it, you know, I think this is a time when it's really appropriate for us to thank those legislators of ours who supported this and who, who really hang in there with this. In particular, the sponsors of the bill, I mean, they, they hung in there, they worked through solutions, they worked the back doors significantly to get the votes needed. And it actually passed with far more votes than I think many, many of us who were watching this anticipated. So it's, it is a victory. It hasn't come without some hurt feelings, and there are school districts that are very disappointed about this and, and really feel like, you know, they, they are losing something in order to, for other districts like ours to benefit. And so we'll continue to work on those relationships and help people to understand how it's actually going to work, with our neighbors especially. So Megan, what else would you add?
I think you hit all the high points. I guess I would add that one of the pieces that was important for smaller districts in Weld County, they added a new kind of remoteness and locale factor, is what they're calling it, so that small districts can benefit from these changes. It's kind of interesting when you dig into the math, how some, some would benefit and others didn't necessarily benefit. And so I think they, they did some changes towards the end to try to fix that so that small districts really do see.
And it also has to do with the square footage of the, or the square acreage of the districts, square footage, square acreage, square miles, thank you, I got the word, square miles of the district. So districts where you have significant land between sites in that district, there's some advantage to those districts as well because it's, you know, you, here, if we were to offer something at, say, at Northridge, that we had a course that a high school student really wanted to take, and it happens now, and we didn't have that course at another high school, they, they can go and access that at Northridge. If you're in some of these very, you know, remote schools, they don't have that kind of opportunity to get to another site for something that's offered, you know, a middle schooler to go to a high school, for example, for a course. So, you know, we, I of course felt the, the need to be a strong voice for our rural districts. Most of the districts in Weld County are rural and small districts. We are the large one. And so, you know, we have some responsibility in, in helping, looking for a win for them as well.
So it's actually written into, a lot of the budget stabilization factor is gone? Or can they just use it again next year?
Not exactly.
They left the language that is a loophole if they need it in the future.
Yeah. Yeah, they could come back to it. They could. And, and they're prepared to if they need to, unfortunately. You know, if the state would go into a significant recession or downturn, they could go back to that.
Can you speak again one more time on how they came up with the money to fund it? Because I know that that was a concern.
Yeah. I, thank you. Mr., sorry. Yes, so it's really, it's, it's really their, their reserve. You heard Megan talk earlier this evening about our reserve. It's really the state reserve, and it's the School Education Fund. And it, it continues to grow and has continued to grow every year as more and more revenue is collected from taxpayers and, and as local entities are able to fund full program without having, the state having to backfill as much, then it can grow as well. So there's half a billion in there right now.
There's 1.5 billion.
1.5 billion in there right now. And this proposal, this first year, will cost?
About $95 million.
Yeah. So not even a million. Exactly. So there's confidence that not only will the state ed fund continue to grow, but it's already very healthy. But this was an important piece in this because there was this fear that if we spend down all the state ed fund and then you don't, you know, then you don't have money for a rainy day. And so I think, I think that's where this language around allowing the Joint Budget Committee, if they need to, to put a pause on this annually, was so important because if something should happen and that state ed fund doesn't continue to grow, doesn't continue to be healthy, then we may need a pause for that reason. continue to be healthy, then we may need a pause for that reason. Megan, what else about that?
Well, I think one thing that I think people don't really understand is that the State Education Fund is truly intended to grow year after year, and there's a percentage of tax collections that go into that fund. So it's not like we would be continually drawing down that balance. It will.
It grows every year.
Yeah, it'll get money added to it. So I think people just saw this as a piggy bank that's going to go down in value, but it will continue to get money into it as well.
It became, it became a piece that, that drew a lot of attention of the opposition. I mean, they used that a lot around sustainability and the reduction of the state ed fund to really fight this. And those organizations and districts that use that the most are, many of those districts are also facing declining enrollment, and so they're, you know, they're, they're fearful of what that means in their districts around funding as they're facing declining enrollment.
When you said our neighbors, you mean a lot of our neighbors on the other side of I-25, is that right?
Well, I don't think so. When I was talking to our neighbors, I was talking about the support for this and wanting to support our other neighbors in Weld County. And right now, like Windsor, for example, they don't really win from this. And so, you know, we want to maintain that good relationship with Windsor.
Same with Pooter.
Same with Pooter and Thompson, yes. So those as well, yeah. So we also, the other pieces in the legislation that Megan and I didn't talk about is there was an increase in the mill levy override match dollars. And so what has happened in the past is we've not been, you know, those dollars are spent out on the match before they get to District 6. And so they added additional dollars to that mill levy override match, and actually, we should now benefit from that mill levy override match program that exists. The other thing that was, that came late in the legislation was lifting the ceiling on the mill levy override cap. And so that would allow some districts who have capped out their mill levy override by having gone to their voters multiple times to actually increase their cap and go further in, by going back, going to their voters. We, we are nowhere near our, our cap, and we don't intend to go back to the voters to, to fill that. But there may be districts that will do that.
That was one of those negotiated points that got more people on board.
Some of the, so some of the very large affluent districts, that's what it took to, to bring them either to neutral or to support.
The matching is a new thing, or we just?
Well, that's always been in law. That's always been in law, but.
Well, it's fairly new. I would say it's only been like two or three years. And you would think that just by the theory behind it was to help districts like ours that have kind of low property wealth but have a mill levy override, to increase that so that we're more on an even playing field with districts with high property values. And so to me, it was always kind of strange that when you get down into the nitty-gritty of it, we didn't qualify. And so.
The dollars were gone, yeah.
Right. And so they have changed that calculation, and it actually goes into effect this current school year. So we will see money coming in, I think, sometime this month to pay us for that based on this statute. So it's beneficial, and I think going forward, we should continue to benefit from that. They do, part of the legislation is to form a work group to look at that calculation and then figure out how to make that work, so.
So really, I think a lot of districts, we weren't even fully aware of this. And so there was the superintendent in Adams 12, Chris Godowski, who really brought this to everyone's attention and really, really worked hard to make districts aware of this and to, to get this as a part of this legislation. And so it's $800,000 or so to District 6 annually.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you, Mr. Fall and Ms. Sponsler. Thank you, Dr. Pilch, for all of your work on this.
Yeah, and I want to thank them as well, and, you know, I might, I was one on hold, as you were, one on hold the time before, waiting to testify, but it really was Ms. Sponsler and Ms. Myers who were my phone and friend. And, you know, as I could kind of see what was coming, I was texting them for, for support and guidance. And our lobbyist, Anne Barkus, was remarkable, and she has fought for school finance for 25 years. And so this was a huge win for her to be a big part of this. And, I mean, she's fought for underserved students in the state for over two decades, and so for her to be a part of this was huge, too.
She said there was, in 2013, she was fighting this in Greeley, and it was just, there were two school districts. It was Greeley and, and one other school district. That's how long we've been trying to get this formula changed, but, but thank you for lending your voice and credibility in the state to make this happen. All right, we're to debriefing the work session. Mr. Osari.
Well, obviously, a big thank you to our state legislators who had the vision of seeing that all of our students in the state of Colorado need support and should not be denied access to opportunity. So a big, big shout out to the legislators and to the work of the folks in this district who shared in that. Also thanking folks in advance for the work that's going to be coming down the road in regards to the new legislation that's been passed and how that's going to affect our policies. And I look forward to having opportunities for our students along those lines as well. And then finally, a, a thank you to the curriculum folks. I've been on those curriculum councils, and that, too, is a lot of work and a lot of thought goes into it and advanced thinking, what happens if, looking down the road. And I, I think we got awesome staff members here, and my feeling is awesome staff members who give a lot of time to make sure our kids have great instructional opportunities. So thank you.
Mr. Bitlin.
Yeah, it's good to hear the curriculum updates and the, the whole picture thinking that they're doing, you know, to kind of streamline the systems and piggyback off of existing stuff we already have. So it's always interesting and good to see that. Also, the legislative updates are always very informative. Overall, it seemed like a fairly good, good year, nothing, nothing quite as scary as some years past, you know? There have, there have been some very detrimental bills that were attempted or have passed, but, you know, and then obviously, the Finance Act is, is huge, and it's going to make a huge difference in what, what we're able to do as a district in the coming years. So very exciting. Appreciate everybody's hard work.
Mr. Rowan?
Yeah, I know a lot of work goes into the curriculums, and thank you to everybody who worked on the curriculums, to Nate, Dr. Pilch, Megan, and Michael. Thank you, guys, for working on the school funding. I don't think people really realize how much work you guys had to put in for that, so, you know, thank you for your time. Makes a big difference toward district and to the state as well, too, so. Busy couple of weeks coming up. Graduation's right around the corner, so here we go.
Dr. Kim, Ms. Ditzey?
Yeah, so also wanted to thank the Curriculum Adoption Councils and Committees. I did not realize how much work goes into that and how many people are involved, but really cool to see that even the curriculum gets piloted out before coming up with a final decision. I know, I'm sure there's a lot of vendors trying to get, get us to, to pick their curriculum, so just thought it was really research-based and, and a lot of stakeholders were, were brought into that, which I think is great. And then the legislative update overall, pleased with the passed and failed legislation, except for the Cora one. But obviously extremely pleased with the new funding formula and, and extremely proud of our district, our superintendent being a champion for that change that, that will impact not just kids in District 6, but really across the state who are at risk. So it's, yeah, going to be a busy next couple of weeks, but really excited about graduation
Yes, same. Thanks, everyone, for the work on the curriculum. Thank you for the work on the funding formula. And Dr. Pilch, I just commend your focus on relationship building. I heard you mention that, you know, after the fact as well, but I think the work that you did wasn't, wouldn't have been possible if you didn't already have those positive relationships. So I appreciate that focus in your leadership style.
I'm wondering, Natalie, is this, is this potentially your last meeting with us, or will you be here in a month?
Uh, this is my last meeting with you guys. Yes, I live in York, Nebraska, at my annual church camp that I go to, so I won't be here. But I think it was a great meeting. I, like always, learned so much from all of the things that the district does, especially Dr. Pilch. It's been a pleasure just seeing how you guys work together and seeing the care that you guys have for us students. I still have two younger sisters that are going to still stay here, while they're both at McAuliffe. And so, again, I'm just super grateful for all of you. Am I getting emotional? We, like, it's very sad knowing that my time here in District 6 is coming to an end, but I am very grateful for, for everything. So, and thank you for, because you've been our superintendent since I was little, so I, I remember when you came and visited my schools, so it's been an emotional couple of weeks, but yeah, I just wanted to say thank you, and you guys are all stepping stones into my career, into what I want to be like in the future, so, yeah, I appreciate you all.
We appreciate you and the time that you've committed to this, because it's been significant. And so we, we appreciate having your voice and not just a student's voice, but truly a wise student's voice in just getting to know you over, over the last year. But best wishes in Colorado Mesa, and, you know, you can always come back.
I will, definitely will.
It's just four years. It'll go by, it'll go by quickly. And I, guys, I don't have anything else to add. Just thank you, thank you for, for your participation and good questions and meetings. The work session is adjourned, and we'll see everyone back at six o'clock.